All right. Good morning. My name is Don Swanker. Welcome. It's Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll go ahead and call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my right, we have Nen Flengel. To my left, we have Mike Steinis. We have Jorn from I T. Lisa with the auditor.
Good morning.
Luann in the back, Brittany from the press, and first up on the agenda is Mr. Jayden Checo, Esquire.
Good morning. Uh, first thing is uh, an issue after not issue, but item that was tabled last week, uh, the one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge, the final payment. Uh, we finally have gotten the proper approvals um, that we did not have last week. So if you have that, so it's on the agenda day to approve the final payment. Uh, so project, just for reference, the awarded project amount, which was what the bid was awarded at was six hundred and fifty-nine thousand fifty dollars and one cent. Um, total final cost of the project is slightly less than that. It's six hundred and fifty-nine thousand twelve dollars and seventy cents. It's about thirty some dollars difference.
Slightly less.
Take it. What is the final payment?
Uh, just the release of retainage, which is uh, nineteen, just almost twenty thousand, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I would make a motion on table the action on one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue.
We didn't table it. We just didn't talk.
I thought we on the table. Right. We didn't table it.
We just didn't take it yet.
So I recommend approval of this or board.
For the final.
authorize the board chair to sign.
Punch list and everything are done. It's completely accepted. We're good.
Yep. And it's been, the reason why this took so long is the D O T did an audit on this one, since this is federal aid dollars and they did an audit like on our not only the construction, but the materials inspection, like make sure all of our rock tickets were there. Everything was correct. So it took time for them to do that audit. Everything came out good, but that's why there was such a delay between uh, completion and the final payment.
Good.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the final payment. You have signatures as needed.
Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve uh, the final payment on Bridge now on one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue for final payment being nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, thirty-eight cents and authorized signatures there. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, next are a couple of utility permits. Uh, the first one is for Macoona Valley. It is to install a new pole for the transformer for our destination light at the intersection of uh, the Caves Road and one hundred and seventy-second Avenue. Um, so this is all included in our bid, but just for them to install the utility pole, Macoona Valley has to have the utility permit. So that's all this is for. So on our end, we recommend approval.
Where's this one hundred and seventy-second Avenue?
No, that would be the Hurstville Interpretive Center Road.
Yeah, it starts off the sixty-third street as it comes off of Highway sixty-one and heads west and it turns into one hundred and seventy-second Avenue.
Yeah.
It's kind of a goofy road number.
I would move to approve the utilities permitted for them.
Second back.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the utility permit for right away work for to Macoona Valley Electric Co-op or do on Southport Township, section seventeen, Caves Road and one seventy-second Avenue for new light, oh, section fourteen, sorry, for new light pole. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the last utility permit is for Preston Telephone, the boring of a new fiber uh, adjacent to four hundred and thirty-fifth Avenue, uh, which is also known as Z thirty-four. That's where our asphalt project is actually occurring. Um, our crews, there was a ninety-inch, either seventy-four, ninety-inch uh, corrugated metal culvert that was completely plugged and we had to do quite a bit of ditching to get it to drain. There's about a little over three hundred feet of ditching we had to do and due to that, the fiber need to be relocated. So uh, this utility permit is for that. So we rec, same as the other one, we recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve.
I would second.
We got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve an underground utility permit for Preston Telephone at Van Buren Township, section four, four thirty-fifth Avenue. It's aboard new fiber. Any other discussion?
Yes. So I know there's a bridge coming up too. That's going to be replaced and there's fiber on the bridge, I understand. Do they move that at their expense?
Yes.
What, what bridge, you know? Uh, I want to call it by Lamont.
Oh, that, yes, it, yes, it would, any utilities on the bridge would have to get relocated at their expense. Any more? I don't know. In the past, it seems like you used to see conduits run on the bridges, but well, we've been seeing lately on some of the bridges where our utilities where they actually just skirt out to the right of way slightly, but it does kind of replace them.
So something like this, they have X amount of time or when you make a request, they've got to do it or how, how does that work? I, I seem to have met some resistance.
Yeah, I've, so what's typical with all of our bridge projects, we give them notice during like the preliminary plans of when they have to relocate or give them the notification of this is our project. Here's our limits. Uh, let us know if you have any conflicts and they're supposed to relocate. I know in some parts of the state, whether it's counties or cities, what have you, they have trouble with utilities relocating in time and some of them do is they don't issue any utility permits for that utility until they are responsive. But with us, luckily, knock on wood, we've had really good luck with all of our utilities.
So something like this, you didn't know it until you found the bug cover and you know, you had to dig back further and then, then they were really responsive with doing.
They were, yeah, and it was, it was often the right of way off. I don't know. It might, it was probably fifty feet or so off of the center of the road, but the culvert, I mean, it was, it was probably a seventy-four, ninety-inch culvert that was plugged in to get that to drain. I mean, it, you're talking six feet or so of dirt that has to be moved in depth. So, um, I don't know when they board that in, but it, it took years to get that culvert filled in. So when they board the utility, there's already dirt. So essentially we were exposing, are going to be exposing. So they wanted to relocate some of this to the right depth.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next are a few entrance permits. First one is for Paul Gerlock. It's a farm entrance off of the Caves Road, uh, section thirty-one. Farmer Creek Township. Uh, that one, it met all of its site distance. Uh, does require culvert and that's been related to the property owner. Uh, and since this one culvert is longer than what some of our gravel road entrance tubes would be required simply due to the amount of traffic on that road because it's over our four hundred vehicles per day threshold. So we got a bladder four slopes, but nonetheless, he's been aware of that or made aware of that. Um, so we recommend approval on this one.
I'll move.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the field entrance. Right? Field entrance?
Yep.
Field entrance for Paul Gerlock on Farmer's Creek Township, section thirty-one on the Caves Road. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next one is for Roger Birkin, another field entrance. This one is on twelfth Street in the Fairfield Township, section thirty-two. This one also met all of the site distance and this one did not require culvert due to its location relative with the high point of the ditch. So we recommend approval on this one.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the uh, field entrance for Roger Birkin on Fairfield Township, section thirty-two on twelfth, twelfth Street. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And next is an entrance, a residential entrance uh, for Robert Reeson on two hundred and sixteenth Street in Bellevue Township, section thirty. Uh, this one we had to issue an address for it. Uh, but it did meet all of its site instance checks and this one also does not require a culvert. So I'll recommend approval.
I'll move.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the residential entrance for Robert Reeson in Bellevue Township, section thirty, Road two sixteen Street. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Big one's entering the farm entrance permit and a field entrance.
Tell you the truth, I don't really know if there is much distinguish other than if field entrance, I was just going to the field and farm if they maybe put buildings up someday, but as far as classification on the two.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they put it in the minutes correct because you're, it said, the first one was a farm, but the second one was a field.
Oh, I mean.
So does it matter which way it is in the minutes?
To, to me, it does not because I mean, it's still, whether it be residential, field or farm, they're all issued a driveway.
That's fine. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
I've questioned some of why they have the different classifications to tell you the truth, but.
How they doing on the bridge and all that stuff on Z thirty-four, right? Z thirty-four?
Yep, they poured all that back yesterday. Uh, so by the end of the week, they should have kear strength to get it back open and starting uh, on Monday is the plan to start the base widening along the pavement to, for the wide shoulders that we'll have. So, so first they got a it's called base widening where they potentially cut out a two, two foot along the edge of pavement on each side, uh, three inches deep and put that back with asphalt. So that way there's support for our uh, show, pay shoulders that'll be there. So that work will, is planned to start on Monday.
Okay.
But and the road will be open at that. It's just one, one lane wherever they're working with pile of car and flaggers, but.
Okay.
The other approaches all got poured back north and south yesterday.
Cool. Anything else?
Not that I have at the moment or this week.
See, they've been out retrieving some of the roads just north of town or east of town a little bit and.
Yeah, it's been.
Needing some rain.
We do. It is dry.
Needing some rain. I drove by a couple of them and they were pretty soft.
And soon the grass is really going to start growing too. So we're going to have to be just days in advance to let some of that die off. But yeah, they've been going strong right now.
Good.
Did talk to Jayden, but yesterday about a couple of roads that might be being reclaimed that the fences are right on the shoulder of the roads. They may be needing some addressing and not trying to work around fences that aren't in the right place anyhow. So we can do a proper job.
Yes, well, our office staff go and take pictures of that and identify the properties. We'll send out letters like we did a couple of years ago on that one where, yeah, the fence is right on the road and we can't, one like snow remove or retrieve all that. We'll want them to move that. So, um, I'll then do that today.
Cool.
A lot of them were can't, I mean, there's a bluff right behind it in a lot of places, you know, so a rock. So they can't really move it back, but yeah.
Well, some of them, yeah, but some of them are just, they want that extra row or whatever.
They go up on top of them.
Yeah. So yeah, then, because I know there's been that discussion with some property owners on Dark Hollow, just because we sent out the letters for our upcoming brush cutting for this fall slash winter and it's been stated, there's bluff there. And I guess just because there's bluff doesn't mean it's, to me, it's okay to violate code and put it along the edge of the road. So, uh, I get it. There's bluff. I don't know how property owners have to adjust their fence accordingly, but.
Good question. So, uh, Dark Hollow, when are you going to bid that out?
I was going to wait till this fall.
Okay.
But once it starts, seeing where we're at with budget wise with everything, where our limits, we need to adjust our limits as far our beginning and ending points, but uh, shouldn't say this fall, late this summer.
Okay. Anything else for Jayden? Thank you much. Sure. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jordan.
Next up on the agenda, visitors and citizens. Is there anybody here online? Online, I only see us participating. And I don't see anybody here. So if anybody comes in, we can address it at that time. The next would be Lisa.
So this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings and as written by Auditor Smith, we didn't have a work session. So I just need a motion to approve the minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five board meeting proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission minutes for the March twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I would move to approve.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to accept and place on file Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the March twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a class C retail alcohol license to Parker's Pit Stop LLC at twenty-nine, four eighteen, Highway fifty-two Bellevue, effective April fourth, twenty twenty-five through April third, twenty twenty-six.
I'll move.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve a class C retail alcohol license to Parker's Pit Stop LLC at twenty-nine, four eighteen, Highway twenty-fifth, Highway fifty-two Bellevue, effective April fourth, twenty twenty-five through April third, twenty twenty-six. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I also need a motion to approve a special class C retail alcohol license with living quarters to the Oakland Mill LLC at twenty-two, zero, ninety-five, Highway sixty-four, Macoona, effective May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve a special class C uh, retail alcohol license with living quarters to the Oakland Mill LLC at twenty-two, oh, ninety-five, Highway sixty-four, Macoona, effective one May, twenty twenty-five to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And just as a final note, I did send you a letter that I received from um, last night when I emailed everything out to you just to know that our voting machines are coming end of life. Looks like they're no longer going to be supporting uh, the repair parts and such, but um, at budget time, I did budget for new voting machines and I did vote, I did talk to the representative when I was at ISAC in March and the question anyways, do you as a, I mean, citizens, would you like me to have the uh, representative from the Unis and company come uh, and demonstrate that voting machine?
Well, I think it's might be good P R if the public wants to see and know what's going on or, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's not like we have to do it for a whole day.
No, I mean, I, it'll be, you know, a half hour, forty-five minutes or whatever, but do you have a bad day that I can?
Well, I would say just guarding because I know we'll have some public hearings and stuff as far as the budget coming up. So.
Yeah, that's next week is the budget hearing. So I mean, can I say the twenty-ninth or the next?
Or the sixth of May?
Yeah. So should we shoot for the sixth of May? See if that, I can get that to work out.
Are you talking about doing during the days, correct?
I'm talking about doing it right after the board meeting.
Yeah.
Um, my intention is to receive some of those voting machines and probably will receive all of those voting machines. So I can pay some of those fees in this year's budget. So when I talk to Mark, is his name Mark Fredericks?
Because we've approved the, the purchase of these.
Well, it's in the budget.
Yeah, but I thought we actually were like, go ahead, but then you held off because we wanted to proceed after the, the election.
Yeah. So that's why we, I could have had them last year, but I decided to wait till, you know. So, but anyway, I, I wanted to learn before June thirtieth. So we'll make a payment in this fiscal year, then we'll make another payment in next fiscal year.
Okay.
So I will try and shoot for May sixth. And then that's all that I have for the board today.
We don't need to vote on that, right?
No, I'm just, I'm going to see if I can get it set up.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is Ms. Becky Chapin, Human Resources Director.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
More staffing changes for us here at Jackson County. So the county attorney's office recently had a vacancy occur. Oh, well, I thought I just gave one so they could probably would you like to pack it a little more to Mike? Okay. I thought we'd already covered that.
I read it.
In fact, I'm reading.
I don't remember, but I really.
So the county attorney's office recently had a vacancy occur in their assistant position. Um, we had advertised and that position has now been filled. I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Brian Donnelly as Assistant County Attorney, effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at a ninety-five thousand dollar salary, increasing to one hundred thousand dollars upon successful completion of a six-month probationary period, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
I'll move.
Okay.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve hiring of Brian Donnelly as a Assistant County Attorney, effective fourteen, April twenty twenty-five at a salary of ninety-five thousand, increasing to a hundred thousand upon successful completion of a six-month probationary period, including authorization of the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same. Any other discussion?
Have you done all the checks and all the background?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. He's good to go.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
He was the one working in.
Colins. So he has his own, he had his own practice.
Okay.
He has his own practice in Colins. So we took the last couple of weeks to write that up. Yep.
All right. Motion carries.
And then I would ask for a motion to approve the probationary certificate of appointment for Brian Donnelly, effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five through October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the county chair to sign.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the probationary certificate of appointment of Brian Donnelly, effective fourteen, April twenty twenty-five through October fourteen, twenty twenty-five, authorized the chair to sign. Any other? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I believe John's on the agenda later this morning, so he will be bringing in one day to you. So then we have Bryce Schmidt, who has been a sheriff's deputy with the department for nine months as of April seventeenth. He is on a current uh, probationary certificate because it come, those positions come with a nine-month probation. Um, so his initial certificate will expire. So I would ask for a motion to approve the certificate of appointment for Bryce Schmidt for the period of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five through January first, twenty twenty-nine, which is the remainder of the sheriff's current term and authorize chair to sign.
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to uh, approve a motion for the certificate of appointment for Bryce Schmidt for the period of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five through January first, twenty twenty-nine. Any other, and chair to sign. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then the sheriff's department has filled one more of their vacant um, PR and corrections positions. They have hired um, Caitlin Kuhl, effective April eighth of twenty twenty-five. So I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Caitlin Kuhl, effective April eighth, twenty twenty-five, at an hourly rate of twenty-one, forty-one, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve hiring of Caitlin Kuhl, effective eight, April twenty twenty-five, at an hourly rate of twenty-one, forty-one, including authorizing the county auditor to issue bi-weekly paychecks for the same. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. How many do they uh, more PR into positions do they?
That leaves three vacancies.
Yep.
Official timing. She's just PRN. Uh, PRN corrections and transport. Sorry. That's okay. That's all I have.
Anything else for us?
Nope, not unless you for me.
Mary Ann?
Thank you.
Um, Luann?
Morning.
Good morning. Okay. All I have for you today is the calendar. This afternoon at five o'clock is a conservation board meeting in Hurstville for any of you that want to attend that. On Thursday, April seventeenth, from eight AM to ten AM is the Jackson County um, local emergency planning committee meeting at the hospital and that Jen said is for any of you that want to go to that. One o'clock will be the Grantwood scenic byway meeting by Zoom for Nen. And at six o'clock is the Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting by Zoom for Don. Um, Friday, April eighteenth, I will be out of the office. Monday, April twenty-first, at one PM, it's a waste authority meeting of Jackson County at Transfer Station for Mike. At three o'clock is an Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services meeting um, in Davenport um, for Jack. Um, at six PM together, we build meeting was actually last night. So you can cross that off of your list. At seven PM is the zoning commissions meeting in the community room for any of you that want to go to that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-second at nine AM.
Um, at least it's thirty is one thirty or one?
Well, I can't count and I'm Frank and I are, he goes, they're not talking to each other. So they have to.
I'm pretty sure it's one thirty, but.
It had been one thirty and then I thought I got a message, but it changed to one o'clock permanently, but the last, what he put on the agenda was one thirty. So I don't know if he just didn't get the agenda changed. So.
Okay.
So at one o'clock, you won't be late. Right?
Good idea.
All right.
All I had for you.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. I want to see if John wants to come down early.
Okay.
Um, and then.
He wants to be here for the cemetery commission work session as well.
Okay. I seen George is out there. I don't know who that was expecting for Pioneer, but.
Well, we can't adjourn until Terry's here. So that's the last one. Those two are the last two on the official agenda. So why don't we go ahead and take a recess? All right. All right. We'll go ahead and reconvene at this time and we are joined by Terry Sells, the Jackson County Fairground Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We, I'd say we heard you on the radio, but we didn't, we were. You were fabulous. I always expected.
Nah.
So.
I always walk out of there and go, I forgot to say.
Well, it is a little hard to get a word in because Jay, he likes to, he likes to participate in the conversation too.
I had um, Mayor Tom.
Oh.
Oh, that's a little.
And that's a little slower pace. James kind of, he's busy. Let's just put it that way. Okay. So um, thank you for seeing me. Um, two things that I want to talk to you about. Thank you. Number one, for getting the lease agreement all. So that, that helps immensely. Um, want to talk about the addition on to Grand Bichette and the thoughts of the board on that. And then I want to present to you what the sheep and goat committee would like to add to the fairgrounds. Okay. Are we ready?
Yep.
All right. So um, I know we've all had conversations with Phil Gent about adding on to Grand Bichette and we first, he first looked at adding on to the north and for many, many reasons that just isn't going to work. And I have, you know, there's a water line there. There's a power line there. There's donated memorial trees there that would have to be taken down. Um, that space gets utilized for weddings, outdoor weddings. We have more and more people using Pearson for, or the fairgrounds for the whole wedding event, not just for the reception. They actually have the service outside and then come in or even have the service inside. So that gets utilized for that. Um, during the historical society muster, I was talking to Bonnie, they, they have a Sutter's Row and that's where their vendors are and they use that area. So if that would go away, that goes away for that Sutter's Row. Then in looking at where the um, where the water line is, they would only be able to go out like sixteen feet. That isn't going to give them much space inside. Okay. So that was the conversation we had to the north. Well, then the conversation switched to, well, we want to add on to the south. Well, then in looking at where the campers are and how that south entrance is utilized for the races, the haulers are getting bigger and bigger and bigger as we're having these bigger races. If they would add on to the south out to where um, Phil wanted to do that, it would not give enough turn radius for those big, those um, big haulers. In addition to that, when the plat, the Platte Street project was done, we lost a campsite. So it came in seven, I don't know, seven or eight feet in that we lost space because of um, how Platte Street was. And with that, we have trouble even getting the campers for fair in there and the livestock trailers go through there. So that's a whole turn radius thing to the south. So um.
Well, I've been, he stopped by and talked to me and I've been paying attention over the last couple of months and it seems like every Saturday night trying to keep traffic off of Platte Street, people are parked two, three wide on the road and on the east side. That space can be occupied that way. Every soccer game, every, but every time you turn around, there's cars parked along the south side of that building. So.
Um, it isn't just during the fair.
It's, it's quite frequently throughout the month and not throughout the week it's used.
Yeah. So the conversation the board had was that they are recommending not. So, the conversation the board had was that they are recommending not to add on, um and we want to bring that to you and let you know, these are the reasons why. It's just there just isn't space. So.
And it was added on once, according to even by the looks of that picture.
It was added on.
East.
Well, and that was a conversation, could we add, could he add on to the east? Well, the problem with that is everything, all the water, all the electrical, all the gas comes right.
In front of it.
Right in front of there. So, that is the recommendation of the board.
So, what, their intention was basically just a lean-to or something, or? I mean, I don't know, what's the sidewalls on the current building to put a lean-to on there, twenty? How wide, did you say twenty? I mean, that doesn't leave, if you've got still drainage on, that doesn't leave an eave of very much if you're going twenty feet wide, and the eave is only twelve now or sixteen, I don't know what it is.
Well, and the other thing that we talked about, there are no eaves on Boyer, and, and we do need to look at at a new roof on Boyer, and if eaves can even be added from that type of roof, I don't, I don't know. Um, but if you don't have the eaves and we get, i- if, if we would add on there, there's not much space, so you get a down, a bunch of rain that's going to come off of those, that's just going to make a mud hole in there. Well, and then, so unbeknownst to me, the master gardeners came in last week? Friday, it was Friday after our board meeting, and Kathy Cook, who is kind of in charge of the master gardeners at the fairgrounds, and they do a great job. She goes, you know, that area between Boyer and Grand Bichette, she had no idea that we were having conversations about building on, you know, any of that, and she goes, we would really like to add some they wanted to do some things to that area to beautify it a little bit, with flowers and some shrubbery and and that. There is a tree, there, there's a middle tree that has to be taken down because it's dead. But those other trees are, they're memorial trees, and I'd hate to see those taken down. Plus, that's a, that adds some shade, where we don't have a whole lot of shade.
So we briefly spoke here a bit uh about easement, that's state highway, so what the easement would be from the road back into there. Did you find out anything from the?
Jane did, basically the fence line. Just.
Is it just for storage for them, or what do they intend to use it for?
He, he's got some older equipment that he wants to display in there, is my understanding.
Something like he wants to put all the ag stuff, or all the pioneers' ag in one, in one.
I mean, just looking at it from here, from the top side, even from the roadside, I mean, the aesthetics of the building with a lean-to on there would not look good to me, I don't, I don't know. It kind of look out of place if you got a gable building and then you put a twenty-foot lean-to, and you end up with a sidewall of ten feet or eight feet, I don't know what you end up with on a four-two, four-twelve pitch, but.
Coming up.
I just, I don't.
That leave, would leave that rough berry flat, I would think.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Always thinking outside. I, I have an idea. You're talking about basically, at some point, you need a new roof and renovating Boyer Hall completely. Would it be better, because they think they have some money to do this expansion and stuff? If you took the money that you're going to renovate Boyer Hall, and moved it to like Volunteer Hall, and maybe you could put some of those rolled-down garage doors, like you see a lot of the venues do, so you can have an inside-outside event, climate control a little bit, you could take the money you would renovate Boyer Hall, move it towards Volunteer Hall, which has a new roof, which has a lot more thing, you could kind of enclose it, make it more a multi-season thing. Give them Boyer Hall, they could do whatever they want with it, you could renovate Volunteer Hall, or Together We Build, and kind of absorb what you would lose with Boyer Hall. And then they could just have that space, and then that's all, that's it, that's, the, there is no more expansion after that.
We rent Boyer Hall out a lot, and there's a kitchen in there. There's not a kitchen in Volunteer Hall. Um, I, Boyer Hall brings us quite a bit of revenue. I would hate to do that. Yes, it needs work, it needs attention. They, 4H uses it during the fair. They don't use Together We Build, Together We Build is not going to be open, they don't, they've never moved, they're not to my understanding, there's no plan of moving the 4H food stand up to Together We Build, because it's too far away. And the the roof is carpeted, so crappy boots and stuff is not really wanted in that building too much. So I think that 4H is going to really struggle with not having that. We also use it for winter storage, so we utilize lawyer.
Good.
And I hate to see, unfortunately, and their generation is very interested. Our generation is interested in that stuff, but beyond that, I don't see the next generation interested, and, and that breaks my heart. The other thing is, it isn't open all year, it's open for the muster, and it's open during the fair, and that's it. It isn't it's not open during the.
I know you said during the fair, they had like four hundred people go through the building.
Potentially, I again, I don't know, I'm not down there.
I question why they didn't want to expand out in Clint Indians.
Well, and that's something I asked too, and I think personally, I think it's because this has been kind of Phil's baby. And I, I appreciate that. I mean, they have put, him and his wife have put in tons and tons and tons of time in this and in the Historical Society itself, so I understand that. It's just logistically, it doesn't make sense to me, to only be able to add that, even if they added that sixteen feet, then okay, you get that filled up, and then what?
So do you need any action from the board?
I just, well, according to our lease agreement, we bring our recommendation, and you guys let us know what you think. And I like, I, I feel like, I don't want to get into this, okay, mom says no and dad says yes, type of thing between, between us. So I'm hoping that our recommendation, and I think everything that we're, the points that we're making are valid, that you guys would accept what the board's thoughts are. That's how I look at it. But I don't know what you guys think.
So I'll be honest with you, my own perspective is, I mean, the aesthetics and whatever it might be, doesn't look the best to me, but I would like, like a little more of what they're trying to propose there. You know, if it's just a lean-to and.
I thought it was enclosed.
I get it, but it's just coming off of that roof. Wall on the, on the south side, I'm going to call it, is only going to be how high? Because you still need a pitch to that roof.
Right.
And I'm guessing that's sixteen, it ain't going to be any more than that, that's for sure.
Right, yeah, yes.
So, um, and then, um, honestly, I would like a little more time to talk to whoever's involved. A little bit, I, I really haven't been up on things, I mean, you said.
I've been down there several times, I've walked around, and the only way you maybe could do is that if you did twelve feet on the north and south side, and that doubles the cost of the project. I think that becomes cost prohibitive that way. Putting twenty-four feet or, and I thought, he said, there might be some room for negotiation on that. If you did all that work and only gained like ten or twelve feet, eh, I don't necessarily think you really gain anything, so. It just, to me, it doesn't look like that's something that is, is a feasible thing. You know, because, again, it's very constrained. So do you want a motion? Do you want a table? Do you want a, you need more time?
I, I haven't talked to anybody about it, I really didn't know about it, like, if I was spoke to, I haven't visually seen it myself, so I don't.
Well, it.
I mean, if you guys are hard set on your decision, I.
The board is, the fair board is hard set on their decision, because we've gone, um, we've kind of been around the whole building, and we're like, it's not going to work here. Well, then we're going to do it here, well, but it's not going to work there. But then we're going to do it here, and then now we're going to cut down on the size. It's just kind of been from one thing to another, to another.
Okay with that, Terry, you know, I guess you guys know it better than I do, and you looked at and discussed it in the board, you know, I don't want, like you said, I don't want somebody butting heads here just because who or what or where. You know, if it's not feasible, it's not feasible. But, you know, if it's a ego thing, well, then I.
You can't go to the west because of the road, you can't go to the east because I think it's literally about ten feet on the east or something, you have utilities.
Yeah.
The water line on the north, I'm like, there was questions at times whether it worked or not.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you could, that could be re-boarded, moved, you know, but move closer to the um Boyer Hall a little bit, but again.
But that's.
But then you got the trees.
Then we've got the trees there, that are memorial trees, that, you know, we lose trees, and we're always trying to plant trees, I hate to cut down.
All the trees that are showing are not there anymore.
How long has that building been there? And it was like split there by the whole, it was built by the Historical Society, is that correct?
Correct.
On fairground property?
Correct.
And what kind of agreement do they have?
Grandfather didn't clause.
I mean, we don't, we don't get into this all the time, but that's a, that's a pretty good view right there. There's not much room to the north, obviously.
And there's less to the south.
Yeah, and I, I would say.
The twenty-four feet will literally, I think that the grass there at max is thirty feet wide.
It would, we would, they would have, if they went twenty-four feet to the north, there would only be twenty-some feet left between those two buildings.
Well, I can't see north being a possibility, so it's either, you know, when you say utilities on the east side.
Oh, that's everything, that all the gas, the electric, gas, electric, and water all come into the fairgrounds.
I think that's what limited, what their expansion could be that way already.
Okay, well, I don't know that, but again, that stuff can be moved too, but, you know.
But that's going to be even more cost prohibitive than moving that other water line.
I don't know that.
Well, and the other thing, yeah, to the south is.
To the, to the south doesn't make sense, I mean, it doesn't make sense because literally, you'll be right up against, you'll have like five feet between the edge of the building.
Well, basically eliminates that whole area, that's what it's got.
You know.
And when you get campers in there during, now it's not just the fair anymore, during World of Outlaws, and those big trailers are coming in, and dog shows, but there's not enough turn radius.
On the south side of the road, you mean, they camp on the south side between the highway.
Even during the World of Outlaws and the dog shows, that, that was prime camping right in there, everybody, you know. There's a lot of people that camped along over in there.
I, I'm sure, you know, if they put one of the Clint Indians, they would not get the traffic, that's for sure. I mean, obviously, I don't think they'd get traffic, especially during the fair.
You want a table to think about a little more, or you want to? Up to you guys. I don't know if I can make a motion.
Does, does there need to be a motion?
I don't think there needs to be one.
During, if you look at our lease agreement, it's the board brings the recommendation to you guys, and.
The only thing a motion by, there's something we're here makes a final.
Oh, true.
We, we've spoken, we set our piece and counted to three, so to speak. And uh, you know, you guys have made your recommendation, it comes to us. At some point, I think we should make a decision on it. Yeah, I'm not saying we can't. If you want to check in, Mike, to see what the expense of moving that utilities and all that, but those were freshly done after Platt Street and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of that was tweaked, so um.
So, honestly, I think you could, if you wanted to make a motion to the fact that we would not approve in addition to, on the south side of Grand Bichette, or whatever you call it. I think you'd have a better name than Grand Bichette.
The Machine Shed, Grand Bichette. My concern is if you don't make a decision that says we're not going to add on to that building, it will just continue to well, then we'll do this, and then we'll do that, and then we'll do this, and we'll be back here in a month. That's my concern. Because this has been a conversation that's been going on for a long time. To be honest, I think the fair board would like to put it to rest.
Well, I guess, a- a- again, three of the sides to me scream no development. Uh, just because of proximity and things, that's the northwest and south side. The east side, it screams no development just because of the, the expenditure it would take to move the utilities. Because then you're talking ninety-degree turns, it goes so far, ninety-degree turns, ninety-degree turns back, or digging it up and, you know, um. It's just really hard to expand there. I mean, is it possible to move the utilities?
Yeah.
Possible. Is that something that they probably want to increase their ask from us in the next budget? Think about doing, I don't know. But um, as of right now, the way it sits, that's a very hard building to expand to me.
I guess I would like to make the motion that I do not believe that expanding on Grandpa's shed is a feasible expansion.
Is that it? I would second.
We got a motion by Nyn, second by Mike, to not allow um, expansion on Grandpa's shed due to feasibility. That, is that what it was? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now the sheep people.
Yeah, okay, so um, the sheep and goat people have come to us. Nice part is, they have a plan, and they have the money. So it's in between.
That's quite positive.
I know.
So, okay, pick me a number, some, do some numbers there.
So, you're looking right, right there where that hand is.
Yeah.
So, the sheep and goat people are always, so they need to wash their animals, sheep, goat, and hog.
Stop, Terry, before you go further. So this is a dairy barn. This is kind of.
That's a sheep and goat barn.
Goat barn.
That's the hog barn, and that's the small animal barn.
Just so you guys are kind of aware of what's next.
So, where the hand is.
And the safe roof up above is what's going to get replaced.
Yes.
Yes.
Unlit buildings on that sheep.
That one, that is the one that's getting replaced.
That is terrible from here.
Looks worse than that.
Um, so the, so the Brenda Hinky, um, and I can't, and her committee came to us wanting to put a wash rack in between the um, right, right where Nyn's, that hand is, right there. And um, the reason being, the wa- there's a wash rack off to the left.
Back, back. Right up there, this man.
Yeah, and they're always contending with the cattle people to get in and wash. And so they were hoping that they could add a wash bay, wash area between um tho- the swine barn and this sheep and goat barn. They have a plan, it would be, uh, if you can look at it, twenty by thirty. They have the money for it, they have the people that will do it. They came to the board, the board met, had a conversation about about, you know, why it's important to them. The nice thing, what they're planning on doing is, they're, they're going to have, um, their pens are not going to be just slatted like the um cattle one, they're going to be like a, a plastic I don't know, board type of thing that will slide down, so in the winter, that can all be taken out. If they put this in, there's water already available, and what they would do is they would run, um, my understanding is, from the hydrant, they would run a hose, they would um put a splitter on the hydrant, they'd run the hose, and that's where they would get the water. So it would be easy in the winter, we wouldn't have to do anything more as far as shutting off water or anything like that, worrying about things freezing, because the hose would just go.
go away once um, fair is over. So I just wanted to let you know that they came to us um, with the plan. The board has approved this, and I want to bring that to you guys. So with the lease agreement, anything we do, I want to make sure that you guys are aware.
So is this going to be more like for size-wise, like animal-specific? Because will cattle people come over and start using it?
No, no, it'll be too small.
Okay.
And the pens will be too small.
Okay.
And we talked about putting it, that was the concern, because we talked to them about putting it over by where the cattle are.
Right.
It is so congested over there.
Where the trees are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the north?
Yep.
Of that wash bay, like right there?
Yeah. Um, those are walnut trees, by the way. And.
Well, they're worth something, then.
Yep.
Yeah, they are. Um.
Sell them.
Want to cut down more trees? We lose trees.
All the trees are messy.
They are messy. You are right. Um, but it's, it's just too congested over there. So the nice thing, there's existing openings between both the swine barn and the um, sheep and goat barn. If you see there, those openings, it'll be fenced off.
Yeah.
It'll be fenced off, so.
So they access it from the middle of the building or around the front? Yeah, they can. There's a walkway in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is all open air, correct?
Yep.
Will it have a roof on it?
Basically, they're just adding, they're just adding cement.
They're just adding cement.
Okay.
Okay, so they're adding concrete and their, um, cement is an additive of concrete. So they're adding concrete with the plastic floor on it?
No, 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 no. The plastic will be the
Embedded.
The gates or the dividers between.
And I can pop those out of there.
So there's eight stalls, is that correct? There's four on each side of that?
Yeah, that's what they have.
What they're trying to do.
All right. Questions, thoughts of the board?
I'm okay with it. If you need a motion, I make the motion. Yeah, go ahead with it. As long as there's no, as long as there's no um, match to us.
Nope. Nope.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve the installation of the sheep and goat and hog wash, right?
Yep.
Station as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
You need your blueprints back?
No, I got, unless you'd like me to have them.
They're kind of nice.
Like you said, this, they might be for installation purposes. Cool. Thank you very much.
When they come to me with the money and people to do it.
Yeah, that, that's all good.
Thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've got too many of those during fair week.
I know.
Good day. Go, Aaron.
Next up on the agenda.
A little bit, Terry.
We have John Keats.
Yeah, over there, Mike. What's all chances?
Morning, uh, everyone.
Morning. Morning.
If I may, uh, introduce uh, the Assistant County Attorney.
Introduce.
I hope you'll sign off on.
Nice to meet everyone. My name is Brian Donnelly.
Brian. Din Plagueo. Don Swanker.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I've known Brian for uh, many years. Um, experienced attorney. He was actually the attorney I tried recruiting early on um, two years ago, but he wasn't quite ready yet. And uh, so we got him now. And uh, he's already hit the ground running, a good addition.
Happy to be here.
What's your specialties?
Uh, well, I started out of law school as prosecutor. Uh, and then as a general practitioner, did mental commitments, juvenile court, wills, trusts, real estate, uh, probate, guardianships, conservatorships, governmental representation. Uh, then worked for the city of Sebula, some, some for the city of Miles, city of Comanche for a long time. Uh, so got a lot of familiarity with the operation of boards and uh, open meetings, rules and things of that nature. So kind of a broad, broad base of experience in pretty much everything. So hopefully I can be useful as needed.
We're glad to have you.
We do too, yeah. We're glad to have you and uh, it all works out real good. Where do you reside, Brian?
Uh, just west of Teeds Grove. So I'm, I'm in Clinton County by about eight hundred yards.
And over?
But uh, my, yeah, closer, very close to Miles.
Okay.
So kind of strategically located, actually. My, my commute to Clinton was about fifteen minutes and my commute here is about twenty-five minutes and uh, I previously lived in Macau for eight years. Um, and enjoyed it. And uh, actually, I think you were the mayor uh, at that time. I remember going to a meeting or two with torches, pitchforks.
Pitchforks.
Uh, was the um, some housing initiative involving in the.
Oh, I already, I remember that.
Yeah.
That was a.
It was a fun time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember it, Woda. At the time, yeah, that was, there was, I think we had about a hundred and thirty people show up for that.
Lot of unhappy people.
It went well. People discussed.
Oh, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully we can live up to your expectations.
He's planning on staying. I see him, seeing him carrying different plaques and stuff.
Decorations? I've got proof that I'm a licensed attorney if anyone needs to see it. So I thought that'd be good to bring in.
Yeah, we're looking forward to seeing how you do and work with John and uh, welcome onboard. We're glad to, glad to get to know you.
I'm sure we'll be talking to you, Mark.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll come down and visit.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you need anything, uh. I appreciate that. I'm used to, used to helping governments deal with problems. So as my superior allows it, uh.
It seems like the government is never short of problems, so.
No, that's very true.
Thank you very much. It's nice to meet you. All right, John.
Becky should have brought.
It's already best.
Yep.
All right. Very good. A- as you know, uh, he's, there's some there's some requirements uh, under the county uh, rules, but you've already taken care of. That's terrific. There's also some uh, rules at the state level. Uh, today the magistrate is also going to swear him in. So he can begin practicing in the for Jack, as Jack's county attorney, so. Very good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Pioneer Cemeteries.
Yeah.
Do you stand for that?
I did look at that letter. Uh, who they're going to send to and why? I do not know, but I thought the tone and tenor and content of the letter was appropriate. Um, I'm, I was actually surprised that there, that there were people, but I thought we'd resolved those issues. Now this has been going for a long time.
No, we never did. These are not one compression, no compression, no. Or out here, no.
I, because I've, I've been familiar with this for, well, for decades now.
I think Ruby's all more heads, but.
Yeah, Moorhead seems resolved. I know the one, uh, the John Swanker one. Um, I've talked to him several times and he just doesn't want the, the liability of people coming onto his property and all that stuff. He debate, he's willing to do whatever he needs to do to keep it up, keep it fenced, all that stuff. He just doesn't want access. And as much as he doesn't want people just having access to his property, he doesn't want to have to keep rehashing this every couple of years. And he's been living there eleven years.
Yeah.
And it only seems like it's been a big deal in the last couple of years. And he goes, he's willing to sign something saying he will, and that's one of the options in the letter.
Right.